Eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, March eighth at 6:30 PM. We will start with the acceptance of the minutes, the minutes of the school committee meeting for February 22nd.
Motion.
Second.
Um, all those in favor will do roll call. Mr. Biggins?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Hennessy, I couldn't find you in my squares.
Here, yes, I.
Okay, and Mr. Mills isn't with us tonight, but I am next, so I will say yes. So that's the four of us. And we'll move on to nothing under communications. Under audience, we have Dr. Harrison and Mr. Graziano for fall sports too. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I'm gonna let Mr. Graziano give an update for us on fall sports, fall two sports. So, uh, Mr. Graziano, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So we're right at it. Okay. So the fall two season has started and, uh, we offer football, volleyball, and cheerleading. We have forty-five football players, thirty-four volleyball players, three teams, and we have cheerleaders. Um, the cheerleaders will do a virtual competition towards the end of the season, and they get to participate at football games when we are invited by the, uh, hosting team, and that depends on the facility that they have. We started the season with a coaches training. Uh, Dr. Harrison and, uh, Jane Hackett, uh, put together a program. Uh, the coaches were trained first, and then we trained every student on COVID guidelines. John had a great PowerPoint presentation that I told him he could have sold to any other school because it was, it was perfect to start off the season to eliminate some of the problems that the winter seasons had. Um, so we went through all of that. We started up, um, we're just starting the season now. Volleyball's had a scrimmage and a, their first home game today. I didn't allow any fans in today, but the, uh, policy's gonna be just home fans, uh, for the Rockland home fans to come to the games. And we have these, uh, landed passes that we made for each, uh, parent. Um, and then, uh, football opens up Friday night at Cohasset at five o'clock. And each week, it depends on how the facility that you're going to, what they can handle. So I just got off the phone this afternoon with the Cohasset Athletic Director, and he's allowing, uh, two parents for each player on our team. Uh, our cheerleaders can attend, uh, and they'll all be safely distanced across the field. He'll have it set up. So as you know, families can stay together, uh, in a group, but, you know, we don't want anybody within the six feet range. And, um, we hope to have a great, the weather couldn't have been better for the start of this. I, I, I think if it was any other year, we wouldn't be doing it, but it looks like we're gonna pull off a few games with the weather that we have ahead of time and and hopefully get all seven games in. So that's the plan for all seven games, uh, for football. We have about ten or twelve volleyball games scheduled. Um, and then, uh, it's going well, and the coach is doing a great job. Nick's doing a great job facilitating the football program as well as Emily Adams, uh, our head volleyball coach. So I, I couldn't be happier the way things are going. But, um, we, we have had stuff in the league already. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. Norwell's JV volleyball is already quarantined. So unless these kids realize that, you know, you gotta follow the protocol. If you're sick, don't go to school. Don't go to practice. Uh, we have our kids sign off every day with symptoms. John will go over that and they, they signed a contract understanding the COVID guidelines. So John, if I missed anything, I'd like you to fill that in.
You did a great job, Mr. Graziano, and I think, um, Gary has done a phenomenal job this year with the athletic program. It is not an easy task to be an athletic director this year, and he's done it. Really partnering with the kids, the student athletes and the coaches, so we're very lucky to have him here.
I have a lot more white hair.
He has a lot more white hair.
Yes.
That's right. Uh, the, uh, few changes we did put in place for fall two, uh, the kids were phenomenal. Um, every one of them showed up pretty much, uh, for training over the February vacation on short notice. Uh, we have the kids, as Mr. Graziano alluded to, sign off every day that they're symptom-free. One of the kids asked, well, why don't we do this for school? Why are you making us do this for sports? And I said, we've, we've seen that sports has an increased likelihood of transmission. Um, we've seen that. We've experienced that firsthand. So we wanted to put this extra precaution. In the classroom, we don't see that, but, um, on, in sports, we have seen that. So that's one of the reasons we put that uh, check off in place. Uh, we've also tightened up some of our protocols, um, in terms of locker rooms, making sure that only a certain number of students are in the locker room at one point, uh, really tying in social distancing on the sidelines. So the kids should be spaced six feet apart. And it's the coach's responsibility to manage that. They have assistant coaches to help them. Um, and even fine tuning the sanitizing. We were a little lax on sanitizing. When you leave the basketball court, they need to sanitize when they get off the court. Same thing with volleyball and football. In sharing personal items, sometimes it's easy when you're an athlete to share a towel or a, a different, um, belonging, um, but making sure that the kids don't share those belongings. And then, um, overall, the kids have done a really, really good job. Imagine yourself in high school competing with these guidelines. It truly is remarkable to watch the kids compete and watch the coaches do what they do. So it's been a real success. And as Gary mentioned, a hundred kids involved in fall two sports. That number's been very consistent throughout the seasons. And it's really, really important for the kids to stay connected to the school. And we see a, we see a correlation between athletics and academics. So it's very good. And we appreciate the school committee's support. Dr. Cron, Ms. Hackett, um, the administration, uh, from Central Office, and Delshaun Flip, especially over at the Board of Health. So thank you very much, and we're happy to take any questions.
Oh, and you know, I didn't mention in, uh, but before the season even started, we did meet with the Board of Health, went over all of, uh, you know, her expectations. And we have contact tracing rosters already done and sent to her and every team we're playing. So the roster consists of a regular roster to, to look at at a game, but the athletic director has the family name, the email, the phone contact, uh, on a spreadsheet. And as they come in, that's checked off. So if there's an issue, it's easier for both boards of health to do the contract tracing. So that's different than anything that was, um, expected in the winter, but everybody learned from their mistakes, I think.
I think you're doing a great job, Mr. Graziano and Dr. Harrison. Um, I don't think we've beat this far if you guys weren't as dedicated as you are to keeping the kids safe and keeping sports going. So I do appreciate that. And thank you. Um, I will offer anyone else, Mr. Biggins, Ms. Davidson, Mrs. Hennessy, any questions?
This is Jamie. Um, it's not a question about all the great stuff that you guys are doing, but I know, um, some of the winter sports were broadcast. So are volleyball and football games going to be on WRPS or, um, can fans watch it virtually?
Yeah. So we were streaming all the volleyball games. It's one's on right now. Um, when a, an away facility can stream, they will. If that game can't be streamed live, uh, Chris has a crew filming the game and it'll be put on WRPS right after.
Wonderful. So all the bulldogs out there, you can watch all the, the great high school sports going on.
We have a great football program and volleyball program right now.
Wait, go ahead, Mr. Biggins.
Mrs. Hennessy, that was an awesome question. Um, I think that's really great. And, um, considering the lack of quality programming on our national airwaves these days, I think we should really encourage our young guys, particularly the ones who, um, I know football, spring football is getting started back up, and a lot of our youth football kids weren't able to play football this year. And the more we can get it out there that they can watch Rockland kids, um, go out there and do what they do, uh, I think that's just awesome. And the, the technology that we have to make that happen, um, thank you, WRPS for, you know, doing the work that you do to make that, uh, to make that possible. Um, question, Gary, just about the sport, more about the kids. You know, I know sport, the sports has obviously changed, uh, on its head in the past year. Not only sort of, you know, how we watch them, how we experience them as a town going to see them, with our parents being able to be there or not. We're in masks during games. Literally rules being changed, upended. How are the, how are the, uh, guys and ladies holding up with all of it? It seems to be an immense, uh, pressure and challenge, uh, you know, for an athlete, a student athlete with all this stuff going on. How are they, how are they holding up through everything?
You know, I mean, I'm surprised at how well they are all doing. Um, I think though, uh, I, I will attribute it to a lot of our student athletes in the last few years have been very good students too. And I think, um, their G, the G, the G, average GPA for these teams are high and they're mature kids. So that helps. They don't like the mask, but they do it, but they love playing their sport. Uh, Jojo Nguyen, who's a great student athlete, three-sport kid, the five-three package of dynamite. He's in my phys ed class. He goes, I can't wait for Friday night. He goes, this is just great. And I said, it's, it's going well. He goes, yeah. He goes, when we get on the turf, you know, it's like, we have like nine returning status. So these kids are very bonded and close since they played youth football. So they're, they're ready to go at it, and they are so thankful just to get seven games.
Athletics may have never been more of a gift than it is right now.
Yeah.
Everything that's going on. And I know it's not the same what we're used to, but just these kids being able to be together and compete together and sort of grow in that way, right? Um, it, yeah, I heard a speech recently and the, the song that we all grew up with, right? Like, I got this little light of mine. I'm gonna let it shine.
Yeah.
Sounds cheesy, but these kids got this light and they're able to shine it, and they're able to be out there on the fields. And, uh, e- even if it's not what we're used to, I'm just so happy for them. They can get out there and do their thing, you know?
So today, the, you know, the girls volleyball team loses by two points in the state championship. A fluke thing because they beat the other team so badly in two games, but they rebuild. They think they're gonna, Norwell's gonna come in, the elite team. They just beat them three-nothing. The last game was twenty-seven, twenty-five. You know, you got Maggie Eli, Julia, their cousin, uh, McGurk and Esposito and all these young girls now stepping up and they're having a blast. And it's thirty-four of them. We thought we were gonna have two teams. And now we have three teams. A lot of freshmen joined up. It's, um, they, and they're all, and they're great kids, but they having a blast, you know? This has been a terrible situation, you know, canceling last spring. They missed a lot, so.
No, 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 no doubt. But you know, athletics, I feel like always is such a great gift, right? Like it's all over so many, including myself growing up, you know, um, you know, socially, you know, whatever it might be. And with all the, with all the struggles that have happened, a little bit of sunshine, you know, being able to be outside, breathe some fresh air, you know, be, receive some coaching, even just to see the face and hear the voice of Coach Nick out there, or girls on the volleyball court. It's just, it's such a gift. And I'm just so glad for everybody at the logjam starting to break and
Yeah.
start to get out there a little bit.
I can't believe the weather we're getting either. How lucky we are. This is crazy. We, we just lucked out and we could have had a thirty-inch snowstorm and we wouldn't be talking about this right now.
Right. That is good.
Yeah, good.
I think it's good for the town too. I think we all know this. We, it's bulldog pride, runs through this town really deep, and we all look forward to all these things, watching all these kids. Um, these kids have watched kids above them, older than them, and now it gets to be their turn to feel that rock and pride. So I think it's good for everyone sort of come out into the good weather and, um, have something to look forward to instead of all just being in the doldrums of winter. Anybody else have anything else to say?
I, I should mention that the towns around us have been great. Uh, Hanover and Norwell allows us to practice at night on their field in weekends. And my friend from Hingham gave us Hingham Stadium on March twentieth, uh, in the afternoon to play Abington because we couldn't fit any parents at Abington's turf field because it's not their Frollo. They can't play on that grass field. So their policy was gonna be like, yeah, Abington Rockland Football is gonna play, and we couldn't have any fans because there's no way to put them on that turf field facility they have. There's no stands, there's no separation. So I was like, we can't play football there. So, uh, we had that field offered for us, and we're fortunate to have that. So it's gonna be a great afternoon, and anybody can go and stand outside the fence and watch.
I guess that's good that we don't just wanna talk to Rockland, that we do talk to other towns, Mr. Graziano. We do have friends in other towns.
Yeah, really thankful for that.
Well, we appreciate all your hard work. Thank you, and thank you for coming here tonight to talk to us about it. We're excited to get things started. I will move on to Dr. Cron with the superintendent's report.
I'm gonna go home and celebrate my wife's birthday now.
Happy birthday, Cindy.
Right. I was gonna say too, happy birthday. Sorry to keep you, keep you out on her birthday.
Alan, you're muted.
You're muted, Dr. Cron.
Dog was, um, having some sort of a meltdown. So I just have a few things tonight. The first round of interviews for middle school principal taking place this Wednesday from three in the afternoon until eight PM. We have seven candidates that will be interviewing. Actually, I apologize, eight candidates that will be interviewing. I'm very excited about the applications that we received and, uh, really looking forward to the interviews. So that's exciting. That's this Wednesday. The school building committee will meet this Thursday at four PM. Uh, the diversity committee is meeting tomorrow, uh, at, at, um, three o'clock PM. We're planning some activities for the faculty and staff to take place on March twenty-sixth, which is professional development day that we have coming up. Also want to address, um, sort of, this is sort of a an odd thing to explain during my superintendent's report, but I, I feel compelled. Um, I heard some chatter following, uh, an email that Dr. Harrison sent last week to parents. He had sent an email sort of apologizing for all of the study halls that were going on in the high school, um, in the cafeteria and so on. And the study halls are being caused by, uh, faculty being out. And there was some speculation because we're talking about reopening. There was some speculation going around that, this may be some sort of silent protest on behalf of the staff. I can assure you that that, that is not the case. I've spoken with the principals. There are very directly related to COVID reasons for our staff being out. We had eight staff members at the high school out for ten days, um, due to being close contacts, and that's devastating to a staff. At the same time, uh, that has happened at the middle school as well. So some may have noticed their, their remote classes were canceled. Um, and again, a lot of that, all of it is due to COVID-related absences. Um, as far as the principals are concerned, their staff has done an amazing job and continue to be highly dedicated to the kids of Rockland, and I don't see anyone banging in, uh, trying to, trying to silently protest, uh, the reopening. Uh, I just don't see that being the case. So I'd next like to congratulate Ms. Julie Minahan, one of our middle school teachers. She recently received her doctorate. It's a great accomplishment, so I wanted to pass along congratulations to Julie. Um, we're very proud of you, and it's great for our kids when our teachers achieve, um, they, it helps us out in the classroom. So thank you very much, Julie, and congratulations. And finally, the reentry steering committee met again today, and I will have more on that later in the meeting. I'll have a full report on the reentry, reopening, uh, steering committee. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Cron. Um, we'll move on to monthly reports for February. The administrators, Dr. Harrison, Ms. Bond, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Scheichley, Mrs. Sheehan, guidance with Mrs. Black, the nurse, Mrs. Ryan, impugal personnel services with Dr. Minigula. Um, I just wanted to bring up before we move on to the next thing, the attendance. Um, we see the attendance written in each of these reports. So I thought I would, to conclude from Dr. Cron, um, the high school, the students are ninety-five percent and the teachers are at eighty-nine percent. The middle schools, um, teachers are ninety-eight percent. The students are at ninety-three percent. At Esten, the students are at ninety-three percent and the staff is at ninety-five percent. At Jefferson, the students are at ninety-seven percent and the teachers are at ninety-six percent. And at MP, the students are at ninety-seven and the teachers are at ninety-eight percent. These numbers have been consistent this whole time through a medical pandemic where our teachers and faculty and students are all being affected by COVID in one way or another. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of them, that this is what we're seeing for numbers in front of us. And to me, that's just outstanding. That, like you said, Dr. Cron, we had eight teachers out. It's not unheard of that we're going to have these things, but I do think that we're doing really well attendance-wise, and I just wanted to bring that up um, and thank them for all being here, students, families, and the faculty and staff. Go ahead, Mr. Biggins.
If I could just add one thought to that, um, you, you know, I did, I know a lot of this is absolutely directly related to COVID, and it's under the restrictions that, that we're under, and we're all following all of, uh, you know, the rules that we've all agreed to. But furthermore, just on understanding going forward, um, we're really blessed that thankfully vaccinations are starting to happen. I pray that all of our teachers will get them. There's many of our teachers who are willing, um, will get them. Um, and hopefully they will have some ease in being able to get them. Um, but there are things that come along with getting, um, the vaccine as well. Um, you know, a lot of times even on the first dose, people are, you know, feeling ill effects and people are, you know, feeling ill. Certainly on the second doses sometimes. So that's gonna affect, um, days at home as well, and that's in a positive direction. So I know none of this is easy, but I know it's all moving in the very right direction. So, uh, we're, we're really blessed to have a great staff. Is out, I, I thank you, Dr. Cron, for addressing, you know, sort of that thought. Um, it's important for us all to be coming from a place of correct information. And, um, I, I think that what's happening as far as the challenging, the challenges of staffing that's happening right now is, um, not just endemic to Rockland, but it's going on in communities all around us, states all around us, the world all around us. So it's all a challenge for everybody. Fortunately, we've got some great folks in RPS, and, uh, we're, we're getting there, uh, but not without speed bumps. It's gonna be a challenge, gonna continue to be a challenge. But I want to feel blessed, um, where my kids go to school and looking forward to getting back to some sense of normalcy sometime down the road.
Thanks, Mr. Biggins. May I have a motion to, go ahead, Ms. And go ahead.
Um, regarding the nurses' report, I know the nurses have been extremely busy this year, like, um, like no other, but their screenings are, um, zero all across. I didn't know if this, um, preventative screenings would be happening this year at all? Like the vision, um, scoliosis and hearing test?
That's a great question. I can follow up and find out. I assume, yes, that all of that testing is taking place, but let me, let me find out for sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the reports.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, I'll roll call vote. Mr. Biggins?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Aye as well.
And I'm an aye. So that's the four of us. We'll move on to school newsletters for March. We have Esten, Jefferson, Memorial Park, the middle school, and the high school. And they are, as usual, colorful and full of life and energy. And it takes a lot of time for these principals to put this together, so we are lucky that we get to see them. I know they get e- emailed home to the families as well. Do we have any questions on these comments? No? Okay. We'll move on to, um, old business with a budget update. Jane or Dr. Cron?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Jane start out with, on this one.
Okay, I'm gonna share if that's okay, Madam Chair.
It is okay.
All right, so I'm going with there's several screens open. Let's see. Are you seeing that?
Yeah, we're seeing that you're sharing your screen.
Can you see the screen though?
No, no.
Yeah, it's not letting me. Let me try again. It's saying your screen sharing is paused.
Yeah, I haven't seen that before, Mrs. Hackett. Um, on my end, it's saying you've started screen sharing, but for some reason it's not coming through.
Same with my end too.
Okay, this happened this afternoon to, this morning to Dr. Cron and I as well. Dr. Cron, you remember where you fixed it from?
Yeah, it was under the, it was down around, it was under preferences, but I was hosting at the time, so I think I had a little different, I think I had a little different, um, dashboard than I do now. So, so are you unable to share your screen?
Right now, but I can read it. I mean, I can tell you what it says.
Fine. I think the important thing is we had some budget updates last week, and I, I know the school committee is well aware of this. We've had individual meetings, but I think it's important, um, that the public be aware of it as well. So we're, we're just, we wanna talk about the new budget number that we were presented with last week.
Ah, I think it worked.
There it is. We can see it.
I'm sorry, Alan, to interrupt you.
No worries, no worries. Go ahead.
All right, so, um, last week, Dr. Cron and I met with Biz and with the town accountant and with, um, the town, with, um, Doug Lap. And unfortunately, they reduced our town funding even further. So our funding right now for FY twenty-two is two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars less than it was for the last fiscal year. Okay, um, so these, all the other numbers are staying the same. We're holding our grants, our circuit breaker, and our revolving at this year's level where those numbers are in yellow because I'm concerned about those revenue sources. Uh, but so far, they're holding steady for this year and projecting for next year. These are our salaries, um, for a total increase of one-point-three. And with twenty-eight-seven being our funding and thirty-one-one being our expenses, I am projecting a next year deficit of over two-point-four million dollars. All right, however, as we have several sources of, of additional revenue, um, one of which is SRR two. And if we apply the SRR two, this is the federal money. If we apply that money in, it comes down to one-point-five. And if we are able to continue to land FY twenty-one in the manner Colleen and I believe we will be, we should be able to reduce this deficit down to one-point-one million dollars. So three things have happened here that are, that are concerning. Most significantly is this number that we've been reduced by. Secondly, is that we have to use our other existing funds to fund things that are happening now, such as our reopening. So originally, the last time you folks saw this, um, presentation, I was using two-hundred-thousand dollars of SRR one money. We no longer have that money because I'm using it to fund our reopening. All right, so also because I have to use some of the seven, the Corona Prevention Fund money at the state level, this number's also been reduced by sixty thousand dollars. All right, so, um, that leaves us with a one-point-one million dollar deficit. Again, this is our tally chart of town meeting, what town meeting gives us. Propose the twenty-five million, which is a two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollar de- decrease from FY twenty-one actual. And this shows the chapter seventy amounts are sixty-seven thousand dollar increase that we were hoping from anywhere from between eight-hundred to one-point-six million, and we've got sixty-seven thousand. We can talk about that a little bit more in a minute. But what this also shows is that the other town funds that are coming to us have been reduced by three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from last year to this year. All right, so that's sort of the, the trend, um, that we're seeing. And if you look at, we were at, in FY twenty, our, my first budget with you folks was, we got eleven million four-hundred-and-forty-eight. And this year, we're getting eleven million one-hundred-and-thirty-two. All right, so to bring us back to our tally sheet, again, I am not panicking. Dr. Cron is not panicking, panicking, and we do not want staff or family and friends, um, to be panicking. Two very significant events are in our future. One is the House Ways and Means budget, or the completion of the state budgetary process. And the second is the federal relief, um, process that has gone through the Senate and is back in the House at the federal level. We are hopeful that between the two of those, that we will in fact, um, be able to erase this deficit and hopefully utilize the ES, the federal relief two and the hopeful federal relief three on things like gap, identifying gaps, remediating the gaps, social emotional supports, um, for, for the kiddos, um, and, um, for our EL population. Because right now, we are exhausting all of the federal and state relief with recurring expenses and not using the money to identify gaps, improve those gaps, um, or to provide social, emotional, or EL supports. So at the state level, um, are you guys, okay, stop. So at the state level, are you guys, okay, stop sharing or? Dr. Cron, if you want to talk about the Speaker and the Senator Keenan?
Well, yeah, just sort of merge it into the next item on old business, which is the chapter 70 question.
Okay.
Today, we had a conversation with Senator Keenan and his aide. He's about to enter into conversations with the Education Committee, and he's going to bring our case forward. I've also been in contact with Tom Scott, who is the head of Massachusetts Superintendent's Association. And he and the Superintendent's Association are also advocating on our behalf. We are in the same boat as well over 200 other communities who were severely hurt by the drop in enrollment that nearly all schools across the Commonwealth experienced this past year. There is a 3.2% reduction in enrollment statewide. And it just so happens that Rockland's reduction in enrollment is exactly 3.2%. That reduction in enrollment is directly responsible for our drop in chapter 70 from what would have been between 1.2 and 1.4 million to the schools down to $67,000. This is not a problem that the town created. This is a problem on the state level with their formulas. I will, however, say, this is the first time, I don't like to tell people across the street how to do their job. At the same time, I do not believe this is the time to be investing in our, in our stabilization funds. I do not believe this is the time to be starting new stabilization funds. Your school department is in dire straits and needs the funding. So I would encourage them to, first of all, release the CARES Act money that is still available to the town for costs that we have already incurred. I would also ask that they reconsider and try to find some more money for the school department. I find it a bit embarrassing to be offered a budget that's $280,000 below what you received last year when you know that it costs at least 3% more to operate the school district the following year. So it's essentially saying, fine, lay off 50 teachers. And I don't think that's acceptable to anyone. So I would strongly encourage folks to sharpen their pencils a little bit and take another look at the budget process. I'm a little concerned. It sets a precedent that I'm not happy with. Jane, did you have anything else you'd want to follow up on?
No, I would like to show that chapter 70 thing that we showed when we get to chapter 70 that I showed today to Senator Keenan.
Okay.
Okay, you want me to do it now? Are we on chapters? It's okay, Madam Chair, if we merge chapter 70?
Yes, it is, okay.
See. I don't know why. Okay. Here it is. Sorry about that. All right, can you folks see this now?
Yes.
All right, this is, this is from Dussie. The two, the most important figure here is the $29,557,000 figure. That is called, here, I can expand it a little bit. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, the 500, the $29,557,000 figure is our foundation budget. Okay? When you, and the required distribution. These are all formulas that are calculated by Dussie. When you subtract the 14 million, number three from number two, it gives you your foundation aid. Foundation aid, if less than chapter 70 from the previous year, you fall into the minimum aid category. You want foundation aid to be greater than your previous year's chapter 70. All right, go ahead, Mr. Biggins.
Jane, just for the, just for the fans at home, can you explain, explain a little bit about a foundation budget and what that is?
That, I'm going to give it to you next, next slide. Okay, so we had been hearing a lot that our wealth had gone up and our property values had gone up. That impacts number three, the required local district contribution. But it's this number, the foundation budget, that we can influence. And how we influence that, the, this is the foundation budget is through enrollment. And these numbers here are our enrollment, the top ones not handwritten. At 2,200, 2,251. We went down, that's 75 less than last year, and these handwritten numbers are last year's enrollment. You can see preschool is down significantly, full day kindergarten is down significantly. All right, the rest is pretty evenly dispersed throughout.
Total of 70.
Total, total of 75. These numbers are multiplied times these numbers to add up to these numbers, which brings us all the way over to our 29,557. That's your foundation budget. The greater these numbers for enrollments, the greater this number is, will be. So we are asking at the state level, we being Rockland, we being this Superintendent's Association are asking that they ignore the FY, the October of 20 enrollment figures and use the October of 2019 enrollment figures. That will drive this number up, the 29 million will go up. This number will go up, and it will be greater than this number, which will kick us out of minimum aid and into foundation aid, which brings us into the Student Opportunity Act. All right, so it's increasing our enrollment to increase our foundation budget to get us additional chapter 70, to get us out of the minimum, minimum aid and into the foundation aid. This number is 5,000, let's say 5,900 and something dollars. It is point oh oh four percent. We missed it by point oh oh four percent of this year of being in the foundation aid to the tune of anywhere from 1.2 to 1.6 million dollars. So we've spoken with the Speaker of the Houses office, and we have spoken with Senator Keenan's office. And we are hopeful that it's gaining traction at the state level. The Corona Prevention money that was just released at the state level three weeks ago, and we just got the money last week, used the October of 2019 enrollment data in distributing that money. And we're hopeful that they will apply that to the chapter 70 for this year. However, the negative, the disappointing part is we're not going to know that before the selectmen vote the budget and FinCom vote the budget. We're not going to have the House Ways and Means number.
This, this happened. I think that in a nutshell, what's, what I think is important is we've asked Senator Keenan to have a conversation on our behalf or on behalf of all of these districts. The Student Opportunities Act was passed with enthusiasm for what it could do for our students with the greatest need. Rockland was really an excellent example of what the Student Act, the Student Opportunity Act was intended to do, to correct the foundation budget formula so that towns like Rockland, who are increased, have an increasing English language learner population and increasing rate of poverty. And we were intended to be recipients of large amounts of money to help close those gaps. So those who worked so hard to pass the Student Opportunities Act should be a little unhappy that towns like Rockland have been squeezed out of it. So that's the story that we're asking to be told. And I'm very hopeful that something may change on the chapter 70 front. But I am appreciative of Senator Keenan, his willingness to have conversations on our behalf and to advocate for us. And I really appreciate Jane and her relationships with so many people at, at the state level that help us actually push some of these conversations forward. So I'm hopeful that we're going to get some good news in the coming weeks. That said, I still feel as though we want to have a conversation with town because this, this budget sets a very dangerous precedent moving forward. And so I just wanted to impress upon the committee the importance and the importance of what happens over the next few weeks with regard to budget. And I don't know if you had any questions or comments?
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Dan. I was going to let Emily go. She had her hand up. You spoke, but she had her hand up. Sorry. Go ahead.
Questions and comments? I know last week we individually met regarding the budget and this update. And a lot of us has asked you and Jane, what can we do to push this along or feedback or who can we reach out to to get more funding or sharpen the pencils, as you said earlier? And we did, I feel like most of us did, I'm assuming, over the last couple of days. And have we heard back from FinCom or Board of Selectmen about them pushing back their meeting for the budget?
I haven't. If you.
I have not.
I have not either.
Okay.
I was hoping that one of us would know tonight as well, Emily. I have not heard from them. They went from being very supportive when we sat with them online when Jane presented a couple of weeks ago. And now I, we, I haven't heard anything from them. Is that your only question?
Yes, I was just curious if anyone has received feedback from them. And I guess my, I received my answer, which is no. So what else can we do or what should we be doing? Do you think? I don't know, for Alan, Jane, Jill?
I, I think, first of all, asking that they slow the budget process by two weeks, I think, is a reasonable request. Great of change in the environment and all the information that we're able to get. Asking that they, that they slow the budget process by two weeks, I think, is a reasonable request. The second thing, again, that I would ask that they do is release the CARES Act money that's being held at this point to let the schools pay their bills with it. And then finally, I would just ask that they reconsider, is this really a good time to be investing in our rainy day accounts or is it raining? And I would argue that it's raining. When your school department is looking at not only a cut, it's not only a cut of $282,000. It's really more like a $500,000 cut. Because this annually will compound. So if, if this budget number were to hold, which I'm going to be honest, I don't believe it's going to hold. I think the feds are going to intervene, we're going to get money, and things are going to be okay. And I think that that may be what the town is thinking as well. That said, I don't know why, I, I'm not sure that we're making that we're making these decisions, really understanding what this will do to the Rockland Public Schools if we really were to have to roll forward with almost $300,000 less than we did last year. It would be devastating to the kids of Rockland and devastating to our growth as a district, which has been, I think, quite steady and consistent. We've been moving in a positive trend over the past several years. One year with a budget cut like that would stop our progress. Would stop our progress. So I'm concerned. So I would just ask that you advocate. And, and again, if there are things that we don't understand, I, I don't like to tell people how to do their jobs. I'm just, at this point, we've been offered a budget that I, that I think is, is unacceptable. And I'm hopeful that we can work together to get one that is more reasonable.
If I could just add to that, that all of the federal money that's coming is one-time revenue. It's not recurring revenue. And that's very concerning, whereas you look to the town into chapter 70 as being that recurring revenue. And to have your recurring revenue stream reduced by $282,000 is extremely significant. And then we're making that up by using one-time revenues that will not be available to us in, in subsequent fiscal years.
And I don't, I don't know how you could make cuts to your largest department in the town. They're basically saying cut. They're not basically saying, they are saying cut. And yet there are no cuts being recommended anywhere else in town.
And I feel we have been fiscally responsible. We started right out of the gate last year. The minute we could start to furlough people, we did. We started turning every stone, looking for every dime we could find right from the get-go, where the town hesitated to furlough themselves. So I feel like we have done our share to try to make things go as fiscally responsible as we could. And I thought that we were rolling together with them as a team and doing well. But I have not heard back from any of them myself. Mr. Biggins, go ahead.
Yeah, so clearly we're in dire straits, as everybody is. Community-wise, statewide, every community around us, receipts are down, revenues are down, restaurants haven't been open. It's, it's, it's really hard budget-wise, I think, across the board. I know that we are a spoke and a wheel. The town, we're, we're a whole town. We have police department, we have a fire department, we've got highway department, we've got all the different departments that need to make, make this town work. And I know where we sit right now, it seems to be dire straits. And maybe it is. But I have trust that maybe even though that we haven't heard back quite as of yet, I have trust that there is collaboration to be had going forward. I trust our Board of Selectmen. I trust our Finance Committee. There are neighbors, there are people that we work with. I think they're as good as their word. I, we may disagree with them, but I believe that we're not there yet. We're not, we're not there to, I don't want to throw stones at anybody quite yet. I think there's a lot of collaboration to be had. And I think that, I think that we'll get where we need to be. Will it be what we need to be? No. But I think we'll get close. And I think with members of this committee and the administration that we have, I think that we have the gift of articulating our positions and reaching out to our counterparts. And I believe that through collaboration that we'll get through this together.
Thank you, Mr. Biggins. Any other comments or questions? No? Okay. We'll move on to then the new business. We have a request for approval of Douglas Wallow to be appointed to the Capital Planning Committee by the School Committee. So we a little confused. He is not on the capital planning or he is on it and we just need to reappoint him again?
Yes.
Yes, Dawn is nodding to me. Okay. So I would.
A motion to appoint Douglas Wallow to the Capital Planning Committee.
Jamie, second, and I'll roll call vote. Mrs. Hennessy?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Biggins?
Enthusiastically aye.
And I'm an aye, so there's four ayes. We'll move on to Rockland Public Schools COVID reopening plan. Dr. Cron?
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, the timeline for reopening. We sent a letter to the public last week that essentially gave these dates, but I'm going to firm them up now. The Steering Committee met again this afternoon. We went through all of these dates. We are looking at a two-phase process. First of all, April 5th, which is a Monday, all cohorts grades K to four would return to full-time in-person learning. On April 26th, that is the week after April vacation, cohorts in grades five through 12 would also return to full-time in-person learning. The hybrid model will end at the dates above. We cannot do both. It's physically impossible. With few exceptions determined by the classroom teacher, live Google Meet into the classroom, I could have said Zoom into the classroom would probably be a little more catchy. But Google Meet into the classroom will not be an option for students at home. If a student is required to be out of school for quarantine or other health or personal reasons, all assignments and materials will be accessed asynchronously through the platforms currently in use, Google Classroom, email, et cetera. Teachers and students will be able to connect daily using these platforms and/or arrange a time to connect with the teacher via Google Meet. Before or after school. Special education services will continue to be provided for students via Google Meet if a student is out of school. For an extended period of time. So those are timeline-related, the most important being April 5th. As a date for returning our K to four students to full-time in-person learning. And April 26th, as a date for returning our students' grades five through 12 to full-time in-person learning. Those who are following along with the state on this, may be asking themselves, why are we returning? Our grades five through 12 students in April? They weren't mentioned by the governor. Or the commissioner is returning until May. And the answer to that is because we can. If we have the capacity to do it, let's do it. Let's get the students back in classrooms where they belong. Into full-time in-person learning. So that's why we are looking at this schedule, rolling them out at the same time. Why aren't we doing that? That is a logistics issue. It also ties into term dates for high school and middle school, which align nicely with an April 26th start. So we feel this is, this is my recommendation to the committee for a timeline, a two-part, two-phase process. Not just my recommendation, but this is what we've worked on with the Steering Committee. But ultimately, I have to make a recommendation to the school. For and after-school care. We intend to offer before and after-school care for students in grades K through six. We have added before and after-school care for students in grades five and six. This is a new addition. Kindergarten to grade four, after-school and before-school care will begin on April 5th. All of this before and after-school care will be held at the McKinley Building. So you used to drop off your kids at their own school in the morning for before-school care. Now you would drop your students off at the McKinley Building. So we'll have all before and after-school care at the McKinley Building. Grades five and six would begin, their before and after-school care would begin on April 26th. Grades five through eight, remote care. So that's for students who, in their off weeks, are going to the McKinley Building to do their work. So that they can get some extra help or just be supervised. That will continue until April 23rd. And we will be busing students for free from the McKinley School to and from their school for before and after-school care. So thank you to Marissa Baldassari for putting this together for us. Again, very excited to be able to offer before and after-school care to our fifth and sixth graders. In addition to K to four, and I think that's a great service for our community. There's a slight elementary schedule change associated with making all of this work. Currently, they, they are in classes from 9:00, 10:00 a.m. until 2:20 p.m. But we are changing those school hours for students to 8:50 a.m. to 2:45 p.m. So we will have the students for 45 minutes more than we currently have them. That does not change the teacher workday at all. Teacher workday will remain the same. So teachers will have 45 minutes at the start of each day, as far as part of their preparation. That's allotted for in the contract. Teachers will greet students in classrooms at 8:50 a.m. And we will have, instead of a timed, where everyone drops off at the same time in the morning. We're going to change that to a rolling parent drop-off at the elementary schools between 8:50 and 9:00 a.m. So parents can pull up at any time between that, between that and that 10-minute window to drop off their students. The Rockland preschool, the morning session will now be from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And the PM session would be from 12:00 to 2:00, which is the same as it currently is. But the morning session on the 5th of April will change from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Transportation, we're adopting DESI's guidance that lifts restrictions on busing capacity. As long as windows are open and masks are worn. So parents need to be aware of that. We intend to change and adopt DESI's guidance, which lifts restrictions on bus capacity. So students will be seated closer together than they currently are, masks will be worn, windows will be open. And I will say, just anecdotally, we've seen no spread on buses. And I think that scientifically, they're just seeing that that is not where kids are getting sick. Assigned seating will continue. There may be a few small changes to bus times beginning on the 5th of April. They will be posted in X2 the same way we did at the beginning of the year. As the first couple of weeks of school, the, the times generally change. That happens every year. And we post the updates to X2. That way a parent can log in and check and see if their time has changed. Routes were designed at the beginning of the year to be able to combine this way. That's why essentially transportation, with the reduction of social distancing. It's allowing us to essentially move through transportation without too many problems, as far as bringing all the students back. Lunch.
Yes. Sorry, if I could, if we could just stand transportation for a moment. We, we're still seeking clarity from DESI on transportation restrictions for the sped vans. Okay, and that determination may alter the preschool start times. A little bit depending upon what information we get from DESI, so. And we'll certainly have it before the 5th, but the preschool times could still change slightly. Depending upon what we can do for transportation.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, lunches. Lunches will continue to be grab-and-go. The elementary will get their breakfast at the end of the day, and the middle school, high school will get breakfast during lunch. This is exactly what we're doing now, so there'll be no change there. The outdoor grab-and-go for our remote academy kids will continue. We are renting two tents for each school to add outdoor lunch capacity. And we're working with the building inspector to make sure that these are all safe and legal and inspected prior to us using them. Communication. Just wanted everyone to know, we're going to be notifying families and staff. That social distancing is changing from six feet to three feet with masks. Elementary students will return to full-time in-person learning on April 5th. And grades five to 12 will return on April 26th. School hours by grade level or building will come from the principals. Again, there are slight change at the elementary level, but all the changes at the middle and high school, you won't notice it from a student perspective. Transportation, we're reminding families that buses now will be back to normal. So there'll be three, three students per seat at the elementary level, and as many as two students per seat at the middle, middle and high school level. And we'll tell you, the high school buses are not that crowded, so I don't see us being more than one student per seat at the high school. And even the middle school ridership is not as high as elementary. So, but that, that will be something that we'll communicate with families. Before and after-school will be offered grades K to six. And we're asking staff to notify their building nurse when they've been vaccinated. To help us know the specific level of district need should vaccine become available. Want to stop sharing this screen. And then I want to share one more thing. Okay, there we go. Reopening. This is what the plan looks like on a single piece of paper. I just wanted to show this to everyone. It has our anticipated start dates in two phases, articulates the end of our hybrid model. It articulates that our virtual academy will continue to operate as usual, as usual. Students in kindergarten through 12 can pivot between in-person learning and the virtual academy before the start of the new schedule. By notifying their building principal no later than Friday, March 26th at 5:00 p.m. This is a firm deadline. We need solid numbers for staffing and planning purposes. The elementary schedule change, which I went through earlier. So that change will, we will now have our students from 8:50 to 2:45 on PM. So that's a slightly earlier start for the elementary students and a slightly later ending.
Alan, one quick question. It's April 5th, correct?
It's April.
Okay.
Apologize. Yeah, April 5th.
I just wanted to make sure before it's sent out.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I just changed it. Transportation, we're adopting DESI's guidance that lifts the restrictions, as long as windows are open. Assigned seating will continue, and there are changes to bus times, we'll communicate that to families in X2. Food service will continue. Before and after-school care will be offered. I want to stress that the health and safety of faculty and staff remain, remains our number-one priority. And we're working closely with our head nurse, the Rockland Board of Health, the Mass Department of Public Health, and DESI. To create a safe plan for full return. We need to maintain three feet of physical distance in classrooms and six feet of distance at lunch. So we are working at that. In closing, reminder to families. That if approved, if supported by the school committee tonight, parents would be required to submit, contact the principal. I'd send an email, do it in writing, please, by Friday, March 26th at 5:00 p.m. If you plan to have your child pivot from hybrid to fully remote or from fully remote to in-person. So if your student is currently fully remote, they're in, they're in remote academy. And you've decided at this point in the year that you want your child to return to full in-person learning. Because case numbers are down and you're feeling safer, that we can do that, but you need to communicate with your principals. And the same goes for anyone who plans to go from hybrid to fully remote. If that is your intention, you need to contact your building principal to let them know that. We are assuming that all students in hybrid will be coming back to school full-time. And again, if you, if you want to make a change in the other direction, you need to contact your principal so that they can make arrangements for you. And finally, just as a disclosure, as a, as a. That everyone needs to understand that COVID is not gone. And if there is an outbreak or a sharp rise in COVID cases in any one school or across the district. For safety or for staffing reasons, we may need to pivot to fully remote. So if we had a breakout in a building, or we were unable to staff a building, we would have to go fully remote. So parents need to be aware of this in case there is an extreme situation. And then below, I've listed the email addresses for the principals, so that anyone who wishes could send an email. So I've just thrown a lot at you, and I'll stop sharing my screen. I don't know if the committee has any questions for me? Or for Jane or for Colleen?
This, this is Jamie.
And Mrs. Hennessy.
Thank you, Jill. Dr. Cron and Jane and team, thank you for sharing this. I know a lot of work went into coming up with this plan and going through all the logistics. We just went through the budget update, and it was mentioned, we are using some of the money that we were planning to maybe. Use to bring down the deficit for fiscal year 22. What other budget impacts that we're seeing? You know, what is the going full in-person causing from an increase in budget for the last couple of months of this fiscal year? And is there anything you could share on that side?
Sure. Yes, the desks, tents, etc. are all adding up, close to $100,000. That's where you saw that reduction from a million to 900. That's available. So far, that's our main cost. Our staff costs are remaining pretty much the same. We may need to be doing some sort of help at the elementary level for. The time for kiddos to get on the bus and to be dismissed in walking. And I'm trying to work creatively with the principals and with Marissa Baldassari on some of those things. So far, that's pretty much it. You know, because our staffing levels are remaining the same. We are hiring one additional cafeteria, four-hour cafeteria person. But that's out of a revolving account, not out of the operating account. We have the money to cover that. You know, I think our PPE costs will remain the same, our cleaning and disinfecting costs should hold steady. Fortunately, the huge thing that it's not costing us any money on is in transportation. And many districts are facing, you know, significant transportation costs. And Liz Norris, I believe she was on the, she, she is still on the call, has done an outstanding job stepping into transportation. Year one, and just, this is, this is seamless for us. And, and that's not by accident. She's done a lot of very good work on this. So. It's digging into our one-time pockets of money, but it's not adding recurring structural costs.
I just wanted to add that the desks that we needed are because we took middle school desks. Out of the middle school and put them into the elementaries, because the elementaries have more tables than desks. And now that we're putting the kids back into the middle school, we needed those desks back. So now we had to go get other desks to put into the elementaries. So if people are wondering, why do we need desks? We're a school system, we should be full of desks. The elementaries generally learn in tables and little horseshoe pods and things like that, that are not individual desks. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Davidson.
Regarding the busing for the elementary school students, are parent, do parents have the option to unenroll easily? You're not comfortable with the three kids per seat?
Yes, and very quietly, we have not charged any transportation costs this year. There have been no busing fees, so if people want to not take the bus, they cannot take the bus. Would appreciate if they'd let us know, because again, we're assigning seats and monitoring, and we do have, you know, but. We have room in our buses right now to accommodate this.
Should that be something that is in the letter of the reopening plan, if you want to unenvolve or have a specific question? Reach out, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? No questions? Okay.
I just know it's a thoughtful plan, and it's not perfect. Nothing that we're doing in this regard is perfect from any perspective, from student-staff. Community perspective, but it's, it's well-thought-out, it's well-researched, it's collaborative. It's in every spirit of the best interests of the students of Rockland. And I welcome, as a school committee member, community opinion, community questions. Community communication. I hope that people out there that are watching this right now understand that you can reach out to your school committee members. You can have questions, and we're here for you. I know Alan's here for you. But we're gonna do this all together, and we're gonna make it work together. It won't be perfect, and we'll move and we'll support it when we need to. But we're gonna get it done. I trust that we will.
Thank you, Mr. Biggins. Okay. With that, do we want, should I entertain a motion to? So moved to second? Okay, I'm gonna roll call. We'll go back to you, Mr. Biggins.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes, as well.
And I am as well, fourth, yes. Thank you. We'll go on to the request for approval of the Ease Leap Steps Handbook for 2021, 2022. It's a first reading. I read through this and I wished my children with this age again. That's how I felt. Reading through this and worrying about packing a lunch and birthday parties and things like that, and I thought that was the good old days. Any questions? Nope, they're all quiet. Crickets, we hear, so we'll.
Under tuition, it doesn't have a fee. It says tuition is defined by the Rockland Public School Committee and the Town of Rockland. Each year, a payment schedule is provided at the start of the school year. Is there a number associated with that?
Yes.
Okay.
That number is, I do not know. But I will find out and get it for you.
Okay, I just didn't know if that should be in the handbook.
Handbook, yeah.
Thanks, Emily. Anyone else? No? Okay, so we'll move on from that, where it's a first reading. And we'll go to remote for, I'm sorry, remote versus in-person school committee meetings. Mr. Biggins, did you want to start with that, since you requested it to be on the agenda?
Who do you think I would want to comment on that? As you know, I feel pretty, I have, from the beginning, felt pretty passionately about this, and I'm not gonna rehash any of that. But I do feel like we are talking about the reopening of our schools. We're sending our kids back, sending our teachers back. We're sending our kids back, sending our teachers back full time. And it's beyond time that I think that we start getting together to source some leadership and start showing that we walk the walk and that. Show some solidarity with our teachers who are going to work every single day to show them that it is safe in our buildings and that we feel comfortable. Being together there and that we feel comfortable having our kids go there in their care. That being said as well, the Board of Selectmen just recently voted to have all their meetings be held in person with some rare exception. So I I just think it's beyond time to have us sort of move to. Together. I've referenced it before, there are technical problems with remote meetings. We've experienced it in this meeting tonight and most meetings that we've met with. A- as we meet with all you fine people, there is something that's lost in not being together and seeing body language and hearing tone. But most importantly for me is community access. There is, in my opinion, never been more of an important time to have our committee, our community have the opportunity to express. Their opinions, ask the questions that they so deserve about their children's education and the safety of which. They perceive that it might be in the given time to send their kids back to school. We have for recent history held most of our school committee meetings in W R P S studios, which is awesome. It's a great facility, staffed by awesome folks. But in rare occasions, sometimes in the past. Darby, W R P S has been so equipped and so accommodating to host school committee meetings in spaces in. Rockland Public Schools buildings that are larger, that accommodated larger crowds for larger issues for community access. You know, I don't know that it's not a bad idea for us to consider in-person meetings to be in larger spaces as of such as a rule going forward. We never know when someone's going to want to show up to a meeting, whether COVID is over or not. We're going to be having curriculum corners and packs that are going to want to present to us. And while we can do that remotely. I kind of have the idea that we could easily and safely do that in some of the public spaces within our building that we've historically used for school committee meetings in the past. So I'm adamantly behind this. Of course, as in the past and every other vote on this topic, I will respect the committee's decision. But my opinion is is that this committee should very seriously consider as soon as possible meeting in person.
Thank you, Mr. Biggins. Anyone else have a comment? Yep, I see it unmute. Emily, were you going to speak or are you just getting ready?
A little bit of all. Regarding the larger space, I know we've discussed meeting in an auditorium or somewhere else in this. School system, what would be the sanitizing protocol after our meeting so it's ready for the next day for students to use it? Hire an additional janitor to come in and sanitize after us?
Yes.
Good question. Go ahead.
At meetings when we meet in meetings, anytime that's there to clean up after meetings or?
I'm I'm not sure it'd be an additional cost. I'd have to take a look at the schedule and we could potentially adjust their schedule if there's a sport, an event going on. And it's fractional.
I was going to say it doesn't seem though would be impactful cost. I mean, we're in the building as it is and there's a custodian and maintenance person in there. To open and close the building when we have a normal public meeting prior before COVID. I'm not really sure why that should be of any impact.
Right. Agreed.
Mr. Cable Murphy is here with us tonight as well. He raised his hand, so I was going to let him speak next.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, Madam Chair. My pleasure. Mr. Bernika and I have been working very hard in terms of making sure that we're able to accommodate the committee in the studio. And we feel fairly confident that with a couple of exceptions, we can. We can take care of that. We can put that product on the air. Going out to an outside space in the school does offer some challenges. That have changed since the last time we did that in terms of how we're configured and how we're operating. But we can certainly look at that, try to get a better handle on what those issues would be. But I would ask the committee that we at least have a couple of days to be able to think that through. Because again, there are some logistic and signal flow issues that are much more difficult to. To anticipate and handle from a remote location than they are in the station itself.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Biggins.
I think that makes good sense, Mr. Cable Murphy, absolutely. And I don't suggest a remote location like the lecture hall or. The auditorium or anything like that in an immediate sense. It, you know, I just sort of thought that might be sort of a good model to work from going forward if it was technically feasible. I know in the past, school committee used to meet in the lecture hall as their regular home. And if things have passed, changed since then, then I understand that. And I don't think that we need to do that sort of in the immediate sense, but just in sort of the sense of the world that we live. The W R P S studios, while I know it's probably most technically convenient and workable. Is a bit of a smaller space than maybe some of the other spaces are. So that's the only reason I sort of brought that point up. But regardless of sort of where the meetings happen, sort of down the road, long term or not, my feeling still remains the same that we should. This committee regardless should move towards having in-person meetings.
Okay. Would you want them all in person or do we want to try to set up some sort of a hybrid meetings? So we have a schedule for curriculum corners and packs in case families aren't comfortable to come into us. I'm just trying to figure out all the options that we have. We are blessed that we have this remote option and that we've made it this far being remote. First of all, thank you to the team that has done that for us. I'm just wondering, where do we want to go? Do we want them all in? So that puts. Curriculum corner with all of those people in the building with us. Go ahead, Mr. Murphy. Cable Murphy raised his hand.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. We do have a couple of concerns with curriculum corner. Based on the fact that, you know, the studio is a big space, but we've got to allow for space for camera shots and camera angles. And in looking at that today. We could do curriculum corner, but I really don't think for the, you folks are all familiar with the studio. The only place we could really put groups of parents would be on the outside wall that's loops downward a bit. In order to maintain at least three feet of separation there. So I, by our guesstimation, that would be probably three families we could put back on that ramp. Anything beyond that and it'll start to get a little tight in there. That's certainly not to say we can't accommodate it, but we do need to think through the logistics a little more clearly.
Thank you. So I have that we have eight meetings left and we have two curriculum corners left. Today is March eighth. The next meeting is March twenty second, R M S. The middle school is coming for curriculum corner, I understand, with five students. Coming for that and they had hoped to stay remote for that meeting. That is on the March twenty second one. The next curriculum corner or the last one for the year would be on April twenty sixth with Eston. And I don't know further into who would be coming and that sort of thing for Eston if we wanted to stay remote for that. We have the middle school, the three elementary school packs and the special ed pack. So that's five packs that would need to come. They are probably, you know, less people than certainly a curriculum corner if you're okay to have those be in person. Or maybe we try to put them on another night that the curriculum corners are so that we're already remote. And that makes us be in person more often than not, I suppose. How does everyone feel about that? Go ahead, Mr. Biggins is raising his hand.
So I I appreciate everything being said. I think it makes all good sense. And I think that. One thing that we've sort of learned through our experience, sort of working on Zoom together for the last several months is it can be done and it can be done well. On short notice. And for the dates that you described, Madam Chairman, is that that. Those are a bit down the road and I know Mr. Murphy said that there's some things that he may learn sort of in the days to come. But I think that for whether it be curriculum corner or a pack presentation or God forbid that. Any members of our committee should not be well and not be able to be in-person meeting that we have the ability to. Change if necessary, right? So maybe, and I'm not making the motion quite yet, but maybe when. I do, the motion should read something to the effect of that we move to. Move to regular in-person school committee meetings. With the exception that we understand that we have the ability to move to remote meetings for really any purpose whatsoever, whether it be. Illness, whether it be challenged due to our agenda and who our guests may be. But I think just as a general rule, I think it might be a good idea for us to move forward with in person.
Okay, I think that Dan, like we've been saying all year that things are fluid and I feel like this is going to also end up being fluid. That we all agree that we should be in person. If everyone else is going back, of course we should be. But I do feel like it does, it's going to end up being fluid. Of course, trying to be in person as much as possible. But with the flex that if we have to go remote, then that's where we sit.
That's exactly what I'm suggesting, exactly what I'm suggesting.
You mean, we agreed?
We agree.
Right here on TV.
Make a motion, Dan.
Yes, that the motion may read, I I in fact, I'll make it right now. I would move that the school committee move to in-person meetings. With the understanding that for any reason that. Our reality may dictate that we may have to go to remote.
I second. The motion.
Okay, thank you. A motion and a second. I'm going to come around, Mr. Biggins. Roll call.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. But I wanted to say that the next meeting will probably be so we can all prepare. For TV land and things like that will probably be remote just because it does have the curriculum corner sitting on it. And that's what they had requested. That the middle school had requested. Is that okay with everyone to stay do remote for that one? Okay, and then from there on. We'll go with to in person. The next meeting after that is April twelfth. So we'll start there in person and we'll go from there on far as schedule. Okay? That makes sense? Okay.
Is it possible for an updated? Calendar of school committee meetings to be sent out with remote versus non-remote? Next to it.
So we can keep, try to keep track?
Yes.
Okay, and then at the top of our agendas. It also needs to say, and I think we got a little confused with this in the fall, is sometimes it would say Zoom, sometimes it would say in person and we wouldn't. Be in the right, some of us had gone to school, but we were at home and things like that. So we need to sort of get that square as well. I'll try to also pay attention so that's not just on Donna's shoulders to make sure that's correct. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this before we move on, Mr. Cable Murphy? Chris, you're on here with us. Are you okay? Do you have any other questions or thoughts?
No, if Dave says we're okay, we're okay.
Okay.
The opportunity to weigh in on this. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate your input.
We do. Thank you, Murphy. Thank you. And I'm sorry to interrupt this Madam Chairman, but. W R P S is second to none in every, every single way. And and I know you're not just covering us, you're covering lots of other things going on through town. Whether it be now the Board of Selectmen's meetings, I know Chris has been helping out and houses of worship in town. Throughout the challenges that have been going on, you guys have really been a great partner in this community and not just for the schools, but for. Really the whole town. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biggins. We appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll move on to request for approval of fundraiser. So the SPED PAC wants to do a toll booth in May. I did have a question. That came to me about this. It's going to be in the same spots that they normally do the toll booths, am I right? Is it on North Ave, having, heading into Abington? Does anyone know where the toll booth might be? Nobody knows. I will find out myself to get more information, but the toll booths always do really well in this town. So I think this is a great fundraiser to be had. Thank you. You have a second? Okay, roll call, Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
And Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. We'll move on to public service announcements. We'll go ladies first, Mrs. Hennessy.
Geez, I don't even know what to say. I think there's been a lot of forward progress. So I think. Hopefully all families have a chance to digest the announcements about the reopening plan. And I just want to say thank you to everyone that's. Worked on that. Excited about fall to sports and all the good stuff that's happening with spring sports. I think there's a lot of youth leagues that have open registration. I know, Dan, I think you mentioned lacrosse last meeting. I know soccer is open for the micros. I believe Little League is open as well. So just, I think there's a lot of good stuff to look forward to and I, as Dan mentioned, and I think it's always. Hopefully known, please reach out to any one of us as school committee members if there are questions that you have about what's happening in town. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson.
All I would like to say is I'm very excited for a healthy reopening plan and I'm looking forward to April fifth to welcome students back to school.
Thank you, Mr. Biggins.
Thank you, Mrs. Hennessy, for referencing lacrosse, 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 lacrosse. Everyone, please register for lacrosse.
Yeah, I was going to say soccer.
I'm there. I'm getting there. And if you don't register for lacrosse, register for something. Parents, if you're out there, happen to be watching and your kids have never played a sport before, whether it be lacrosse or soccer or baseball or anything, get them out there. Now's the time. I was saying it with Mr. Graziano earlier, sports and athletics and activities maybe. Haven't been as important as they are right now. Kids have been locked up all this tough winter, just like all of us. It's it's really so healthy to get them out there, even if it's their first time. You can, there's never, it's never too late to start, never too late to learn, never too late to meet new friends. And I'll tell you what, we got some great coaches in all these programs. We got some really great youth programs in town. So please, 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 if you're thinking about. A youth sport, I know all of our youth programs are doing it safely. Rules have been adjusted, regulations have been adjusted to adhere to all the concerns of everything going on of the day. So. Really think about reaching out and having your kids go out there and join one of our sports. Other than that, I also wanted to just thank again Father Hickey and Holy Family Church. Father Jim is a real great friend of mine and if there's ever, you know, a really great community member, remember. Father Hickey and Holy Family Church is one. They're a great community partner and they, in our time of need, have just provided. Rockland Public Schools quite a larger amount of desks that we're going to be able to really be able to use for our school population. So. Thank you, Holy Family Church, and thank you, Father Jim. And just a quick comment on a little bit of the tone that sort of happened just a little bit earlier based on our budget process. I know I'm very concerned about the school budget, as I know everyone on this call is, as I know every parent should be. And I do want to urge that patience is important and collaboration and communication is important and I. Really do trust that that still is alive. I believe that we're going to be able to do it together. I believe that we'll. We have the trust of our board of faculty and our finance committee and we're all going to get this done together. Through some thoughtful conversations and collaboration, just like we always have done in the past. So with that being said, that's all I got.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of logging in to watch a speaker for the middle school with the seventh and eighth graders this past Friday. Mr. Ocheta, his name, he's like to call himself Chu. He was, it was about becoming a change maker and he said, your voice is your power. Ask questions because knowledge gives you power. I thought he was very entertaining and from what I've heard, the students really enjoyed him. His, his message was really clear that just because you may not be. He was deaf and he said, just because I couldn't hear anything didn't mean I couldn't do anything. And I thought he had a really powerful message, so I was happy that the middle school had that for those kids. To do something. For the next thing in their world to see that there's a greater picture to what's moving on just besides the doors that they're in, the walls that they're in. Then I wanted to say a little bit about what my week entails here as the school committee member. This afternoon, we had the reopening committee, the steering committee. Wednesday, I will attend a, the school council. I'm on the middle school, school, middle school, school council. I've been on for five years, so I have that Wednesday afternoon and then I will be attending with Dr. Cron. And Jane, the finance committee meeting. I'm hoping that the rest of the school committee members do. Um, I'm hoping that the rest of the school committee members do as well, um, so that we can sit and hear what they have to say and Dr. Cron and Jane will present. And then Thursday, I do have the school building committee, Ms. Davidson and I and Mr. Biggins are on that as well together. Um, and we are moving forward in the progress of building the brand new school. So I just wanted to let you know, I usually try to chime in and let people know what we're up to each day. We do get to present here on TV with you, but then a lot of us move around and do other things as well. Um, so I thought I would share that, but that's all I have. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll roll call, Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
And Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And I as well. Thank you all. Have a good night.